I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session, held on Tuesday, June 24, 2025, commencing at 7:00 p.m. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson, and online we have Councilmembers Salaah Houdin and Fields and myself, Council President Kritzer. On the agenda tonight, we have five items. Our Respect Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program update, the Redmond Municipal Code update, overview and proposed changes to Vehicles, Traffic, Streets and Sidewalks Code, Tree Canopy update, council talk time, and then we'll have an executive session regarding complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee. The first item on the agenda is our Respect Equity Diversity and Inclusion Program update. Very excited to be able to have this discussion tonight, and I'll turn it over to Melissa Files, our COO, to introduce this item.
Well, let me get to the front of the PowerPoint instead of the end of the PowerPoint. I just gave you a preview. Thank you, Council President Kritzer, and good evening, Council. Today, as Council President Kritzer said, we are going to give an update on our ready plan and where the work is to date. Joining me is Anita Page from the Edge Advisory Group, as well as Dr. Adrienne Thompson, who is working with Anita as well. So I'd like to welcome them to the council meeting. Our goal today is to look at the ready plan and its goals, as well as, as I said, the work to date and next steps that we have mapped out. These are the ready goals. They should look familiar to you. They haven't changed since we talked about the plan last time. In your council packet, I outlined where council saw themselves in the ready plan. So both in the memo and in the plan itself, I highlighted those. These kind of activities, both strategic level and tactical level activities, were identified by the council in both retreats, as well as emails to me. So one of the things that I would like to ask you, and you don't have to tell me tonight, but one of the things I would like to ask you is to go through the plan and make sure that I captured everything that you remembered that we talked about. As you know, there are other strategic level activities and tactical level activities in the plan, as a matter of fact, quite a few of them, and the directors and departments are working on those, as well as the work we are doing with Ms. Page and Dr. As you may recall, when I brought the contract for the Edge Advisory Group, we were doing three things. One was look at the rollout of this plan. The second one was identification of classifications for the appropriate staffing, as well as leadership training. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Anita Page and Dr. Thompson to talk about the work we have done to date and what they have found out so far as they look at all the data that the city has.
Thank you so much, COO Files. At the last minute, I put together just a bit of infographic, and so I'd like to humbly apologize to the two members who are online with us, who are joining us virtually. I am not going to say anything that... They're going to see everything that I say. I'm not going to say anything. There's not anything special about having it in front of them that you're going to miss out on. It's just a way to kind of categorize and take notes. So I will make sure that I state loudly and clearly everything that I'm going to share with members and will offer to those who are present in this space, and the opportunity to just have notes to follow along, just a one-pager, and we'll make sure that electronically we get that to the two members who are in the virtual space. So again, please accept my apology. I didn't consider the virtual space on this evening, in the last-minute flight to go over to Staples and grab this as a way to track. So first and foremost, I'm excited to be able to give a progress report. We had opportunity to sit with the mayor's team yesterday and go through the progress report and kind of what we looked at and what next steps are from a leadership level. And to be quite frank, frankly, there's no other way around this than for it to be led from the top. With that being said, I would like to honor you as a council for your commitment and dedication to this work over the years, and to take that into the space of what's been created as an assessment and the results that we found in that space is a result of your willingness to be focused and to stand, I would say, if we consider the times we're in right now, bravely in the space, and that's really what it is here. So the first thing is, we had the five goals, as Melissa mentioned. We are not making any recommendation to the alteration of the goals, except for one small addition, and that small addition is when we look at Goal Four, which is pro-equity, anti-racism implementation, referred to as PARE. We're making a strong recommendation that we do a dash or some other of a subtitle that outlines systems, processes, policies and procedures. We want that to be clear when someone is looking if they only got the five goals. We want it to be clear that we're being comprehensive in that space, and we're looking at this from a systematic, as well as a systemic approach. So that evaluation and the opportunity to apply that lens, I think, is going to be critical to our success in the plan. And I'll just stop and ask if anyone has any questions about that recommendation or comments on the addition of those words. Member Stewart?
Thank you so much. Could you just state the whole revised or suggested goal one more time for the listening public? We want to make sure we got it.
I will. We have Goal Four listed as pro-equity, anti-racism implementation, and the acronym for that is PARE. We coupled that off of some requirements that were coming from the top, meaning the state of Washington, in regards to having the expectation that Washington was evaluating the ecosystem in which we all live and work. Our addition to that is being clearly clear when we call out systems, processes, policies and procedures, and we have the expectation that as we're evaluating the plan, that we're looking at all of those aspects of our work and our operations.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right, you can continue.
Great, thank you so much. And if I haven't asked for a pause for questions, and you have a question, please say, Anita, I have a question, and feel free to interject. So as you know, there were three key components to our contract, and COO Files mentioned them at a high level, but just as a recap, we were looking at having an organizational culture that's healthy, using a foundation of respect, and you chose to adopt the respect curriculum, tools and application models, and we are scheduling a rollout. We have delayed it just a bit in terms of what we want it to be and what we want it to look like, to make sure that we had an opportunity to step back and really let leaders, meaning the mayor and the mayor's team, embrace the role of leadership in the space, so there was congruency between what we were saying, what they were seeing and what we were doing with a true leader-led process. So what's going to happen is, we started today, the first phase of the certification. We have our respect ambassadors, who have been identified and were present in the room with us today. Those are the people who are going to be responsible for bringing this down into the organization. We're going to schedule a strategic rollout led under Kate's leadership. What is Kate's last name? The one who does... Kate Rogers, yes, who does all of your phenomenal training and operates in that space in partnership with COO Files to design that. So in September, we will have the certification completed as our goal, and we will also have three pilot sessions that are scheduled. And the theory behind doing the certification and getting your respect ambassadors up and ready and having the pilot scheduled is that we all know that people participate and learn and study and prepare when they know that they have a date to present. So those things will be happening in September. The second thing is the structural alignment piece of it, and I'm going to talk to that in just a second. I want to bop over to the capable leadership and touch on that first. In capable leadership, as I said, leading from the front, having the leaders role modeling the work, supporting the work, sponsoring the work, holding themselves and others accountable to the work, is going to require some leadership development. And just a small distinction, because I want to be clear on what we're assessing as performance in the city of Redmond, is we have great leaders who are operating in a vertical space, and as you know, all of your departments are being led well. When we say leadership, we're talking about the collective, how we lead together as a group of leaders in strategic governance and how we bring that forward. So we'll also be providing some training for that that's customized, and I think some feedback from you all tonight will help us with that customization process. What do we want to equip our leaders with? How do we equip our leaders, and how are we going to measure their effectiveness as that space? Any questions there before I bop back to the structural piece? Great. So Dr. A, our wonderful researcher, has come into the space where he's been functioning as a person who would be here doing this equity work. And in that space, one of the goals was that we would build the structure in which a person could walk in and everything would be set for that person to be able to go to work and work in the city of Redmond with complete role clarity, the ability to move about throughout the organization with the appropriate level of influence, and the ability to truly support the implementation of the plan. With that, a part of his charge and a part of his deliverables centered on having current state assessments, centered on being intentional about culture and what that looks like to effectively promote equity, and then looking at it through the lens of an active ecosystem, how it translates into our entire city, not just the operations of the work that we do here, and not just centering around employees, but looking at it through the lens of impact, which is, I know, something that's been of interest to all of you as council members since the day that I met some of you for the first time and ongoing throughout the conversation. With that being the case, I want to drop down just a little bit, and for those of you who are online, I'm talking now about the approach. How did Dr. A actually approach that work? So the very first thing was, his charge was to have the ability to do a current level assessment in the space of equity. And so from a twofold approach to the deliverable. One was give you the current level assessment of where we are today, and the second was to leave you with a tool so you could continuously assess where you are in the space of equity. So a new person who comes into any position within that structure has the ability to have a tool to look at how we're doing with equity. He has named it the WEA, which is the Workplace Equity Assessment, and in that assessment, there's eight very specific dimensions with three indicators under each, and I've done for the purpose of tonight, an opportunity for us to look at the eight dimensions. The first one is, again, leader and leadership commitment. The second is recruitment and hiring practices. The third is compensation and benefits. The fourth is retention and advancement. The fifth is workplace culture and inclusion. The sixth is learning and development. The seventh is community engagement and external relationships, and the eighth is employee interpersonal interactions. That is a way for us to look at that is to take a comprehensive approach, which means that we're really looking at focusing on all of the relevant aspects of that topic, which is equity. We then went a little bit further and said, and I say "we," meaning that I collaborated, but he did the heavy lifting, I want to give credit where credit is due, we went a little bit further and said, what if we look at this through a holistic approach? And in the findings, I want to make sure that I word this properly, in the WEA assessment, we did not find looming equity issues in the city of Redmond. We applied it, there wasn't a thing that we could say, we have a serious issue over here, we have a problem over here, we need to do something, and the sources of information that came in were from your former consultant, work that I did and interacted with. FIRE was kind enough to give us some reporting, and Parks was able to give us some reporting, and that all went into a rubric. And from that space, one of the preliminary findings is that you all will get the best value by focusing on the organizational health here at the city of Redmond and having your DEI outcomes be a result of being a healthy culture. So all of those same aspects are considered, and then Dr. A actually looked at, how do you connect those frameworks? So we looked at the aspects of organizational health as drivers, identified correlation and causation, multidirectional, and then looked at it through the lens of an organizational health assessment to really drill down where we should be able to do that work or where we should focus that work. So I want to pause for just a second and ask Dr. A to talk about some of the outcomes when we get when we take an interconnected or holistic approach and move away from what I believe that a lot of organizations have made the mistake of and why we see so much in the news that's negative, move away from approaching equity as a thing that sits over here and recognizing that equity is not a thing, it's everything, and making sure that we don't have an issue, a challenge, a barrier or an impediment to performance and call it equity because it's hard, when in reality it could be leadership, or it could be systems, or it could be processes. So we want to make sure that we're comprehensive and holistic in the approach and that we have the ability to find the drivers that are going to get you to the outcomes outlined in the ready plan. So would you please, Dr. A, just talk about some of the outcomes of that interconnected approach?
Yes. Excuse me. So when you have, when you look at these eight dimensions and you look at how they typically function, how organizations or cities track their equity, right, they are byproducts of the system that they find themselves in, right? And so when you, when you put it solely in an equity hands or somebody who's doing that work, they don't have, they're downstream, they don't have the power, they don't have the dollars, they don't have the connections to make, make some of the issues, and so then what ends up having to happen is they need to then sell it upstream, right? Get that connection upstream. And what we find is organizations that have it higher up, that are embedded into everything that they do, they have a lot more benefits and outcomes, right? So then when you look at the research and you look at an embedded equity approach, folks who have it embedded in everything that they do, you see about 40% faster improvements in equity outcomes, right? Because it's not solely the job of one person, you see 60% higher sustainability in their initiatives, because if I have one person trying to lift everybody's initiatives, I'm just that one person. If everybody is doing it, then that, that feedback, that engagement happens much, much quicker. You then ultimately see up to 25% of your engagement scores increase automatically, right? Because what ends up happening is, instead of saying, what's not working for me, right? Why I'm not engaged because of this equitable outcome that I see, when you pull it into everybody's job, you actually do the work, then those needs aren't even coming to a point where I have to complain in the way that says, hey, this feels like it's not fair, because in fact, it's been addressed through leadership, through organizational structure and alignment. Lastly, you see this superior connection between equity and the overall outcomes, because they can't sit by themselves, right? And so for instance, what ends up happening, and when you see it go bad, like we've seen it in a lot of places, or not be effective in other places, is that you put equity on a pillar to itself, it doesn't have the power, it doesn't have the support, it doesn't have the autonomy, it then will fail. And when it fails, it then becomes the scapegoat for what should have always been a leadership problem, right? And so what we've ended up doing is saying, you, you have things that are issues, things you can point to, people will complain about, that are tangible and live in the equity space, but they are not directly standalone issues. They are directly associated to your organizational health and your organizational alignment, your leadership capacity, and that's ultimately where it needs to be intervened at. And so that's what we were able to do with this WEA and then the frameworks that we kind of linked it to. So then what you'll have is the ability to ask a question or a situation or a kind of some feedback and be able to pinpoint where it exists actually higher up in your organizational structure.
Any questions before we continue on? Any comments?
Maybe you can continue the presentation. I can see maybe some questions starting, but should, do you want to finish the presentation, then we can get into discussion?
Absolutely. For the benefit of those that don't have the infographic in front of them, I'm going to do some reading, and I want to make sure that I do this reading so that everyone hears the message verbatim. For those of you who are in the room with the infographic in front of you, I am reading from that first light gray session, section, it's almost to the bottom of the page. So just reiterating, an integrated approach doesn't diminish the importance of equity work, it strengthens it by making sure it has the organizational foundation necessary to succeed. By addressing both organizational health and equity together, we create a stronger foundation and a durable solution for lasting change that, bullet point one, tackles root causes rather than just symptoms. Bullet point two, reduces resistance by framing issues as organizational-wide concerns. Bullet point three, creates benefits for all employees while advancing equity goals. Bullet point four, builds sustainable improvements through comprehensive organizational transformation. And I'm going to stop reading and basically state that there are too many spaces where organizations have demonstrated a commitment to DEI, to equity work, to anti-racism, to race and social justice, to any of those things, but they've not made it past the transactional steps. We're looking at it through the lens of standard change management, meaning if this is our current state and is our desired future state, then what needs to change in that space in order to have this be actualized? With that, the approach and focus is reframing how we think about the equity work and looking at it as an outcome of doing the transformational work versus attempting to do transactional DEI steps and expecting that the organization will transform. And I know that was a lot, so I'll just pause. If you want to jump in or ask any questions, please feel free before I continue reading.
I'll just jump in for, just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So I think when you kicked off this work earlier this year, you had come and we talked about how equity work does need to be throughout and really doing this work with our employees to be able to make sure that in all our departments that it's integrated, but also establishing an office of equity in order to measure the progress on that work, in order to support, especially once you all aren't here, and getting recommendations for what the staffing model would look like for those positions. So I guess I'm unclear if your recommendation is that we shouldn't have an office of equity, but I thought we were going to hear about that tonight. So I'm curious if you can share a little bit more about that.
You are definitely going to hear about that, and you're going to hear about what is the slight adjustment or pivot from that original approach, and you're going to hear the why, and the why sits in the assessments, what we have found. So when we came, we hadn't launched the current assessment. We didn't know the current state. And now that we've done the assessment work, the identification of our organizational health issues are going to be an impediment to focusing just on DEI without addressing those greater issues. And I say that in a respectful manner, meaning that, I'll give you an example, we had a meeting today, again, with our respect ambassadors, we went through our engagement numbers utilizing the definitions of the Gallup poll. We came into the space where their assessment of the organization was 20% of your people in the organization are actively engaged, 45% disengaged, which is kind of the neutral space, and 35% actively disengaged. I can't determine whether or not that's accurate, that's their perspective of the city of Redmond, and it's just one small group. We have other numbers that are similar in terms of feedback that we've gotten. So if we look at that engagement approach, and we know that the driver of engagement is organizational culture, if I were to do a Gallup poll, I could vertically slice that Gallup poll and say, if I have 20% of people who are actively engaged, I could put any demographics that I want to that and figure out who the people in your organization are in terms of what those demographics look like. So if I come into an organization and they go, we're at 20%, or if we're at 50%, if we're at 50% actively engaged, and I vertically slice those numbers with the demographics, and I realize that those people who are actively engaged are white men who are between 35 and 45, then we are not doing really good at engaging a diverse population of people. So the slight pivot in the recommendation is coming in the transformational approach that doesn't necessarily change the skillset of the person, but adds additional requirements of the person that you would hire. And to clarify that, I'll be really clear and say, what you need here at the city of Redmond, our strong recommendation centers more around an office of strategy and performance or organizational transformation with someone who's highly skilled in equity work, but just as strong in organizational change management, just as strong in strategy, just as strong as any other thing that we would use for business outcomes. We are not recommending that you change any single goal, other than what we added with those small words that added more, again, to your robust plan. We are not making the recommendation that we back down from any strategies or key performance indicators. We are making a recommendation that if it's going to be embedded in all that you do here at the city of Redmond, there has to be some strategy and performance. I know we're in a public setting, but I would like to elaborate for the space of transparency as to why we're making that recommendation. I think that we have done very well with strategy design. I think the gap is implementation and accountability of the strategy. So while we can look at this and we can say our goals are strong, our objectives are strong, our key results are strong, we have written down all the right things to do. We don't have a single dashboard that tells us how we're performing to plan. We don't have any mechanisms for performance management, and by performance management, I don't mean the PDP where you sit down with the employee and say, here's how you're doing this year. I'm looking at it through the lens of how do we push strategy all the way down to the frontline? How do we get people to embrace their role in strategy? And how do we hold them accountable to the work? And how do we measure that in an effective way? In a perfect world with strategy and performance, if you were out at the mall in, you know, Como Four, somebody jumped in front of you and said, hey, President Kritzer, can you give us an update on your plan? Right now, outside of emailing or asking or getting a report out, you can't answer that question effectively all the way down to the frontline. If we had an office of strategy and performance, I could say, hey, person, I know that you helped build the strategy out using your expertise, your equity background, so we know it's embedded, and I would like to know if you could prepare a report for the mayor, looking across the enterprise, and identify for me all goals that are behind their timeline. You should have that. You should have dashboards that connect all the way down to the organization, and because you are charged with governance, and because our mayor is charged with governance, and because the mayor has chosen to share that accountability with the mayor's team, there should be clear line of sight into this organization, and there is not. When I say that we have good leaders, I'm saying that departments are functioning and they have a strategy. What we don't have is evidence that it connects back up to your overarching plan, which is the ready plan. So an example is, if I could speak, FIRE, we're meeting with FIRE tomorrow, they have a really strong strategic plan, it's about two to two and a half years in progress. Tomorrow, we're looking at how does that connect and support to the ready plan? We're taking the ready plan and adding that to what they've done in their initial SWOT analysis, and having them review whether or not their additional strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats specifically in FIRE, when we apply the ready work and plan. And then we're going into their plan, and think about it, if there was an additional column added to their plan that says, when we do this in FIRE, it connects and supports to the ready plan, goal one, strategy one, tactic one, point B. So now we can see, when you have that camera, that microphone, how we are actually operationalizing the ready plan. And the operationalization should show up in every single department, and you should at any given time, in your space of governing, know how we're performing to plan, where those deficiencies are. If you are asked for additional resources, they should be justified based on what the gaps are in the plan or what the barriers are that are uncovered. Redmond needs to have that, and it's not when we say everything. If we were doing a strategic plan that was not ready and you just had a comprehensive plan, we still don't have those mechanisms in place. In this case, we are looking for a person who has expertise in organizational change, organizational change management, organizational accountability, strategic planning, and extreme background in equity work. Now here's the difference. Dr. A alluded to that sometimes we put people in positions, and it doesn't matter, I just want to say, where they sit at the org chart, people can sit at the highest level of the org chart and still be powerfully disempowered. The gap has been with equity work is they have not been invited to, expected to, are held accountable for driving strategy. They make recommendations at best, and that's it. And then we look for events to say we're doing equity work, not Redmond in general, and flags and pot legs are not equity work. That's the very transactional thing. And so until we get to the root cause, the transformational piece of it, we're not going to be successful at implementation until we start doing performance management. That means holding leaders accountable, that means holding managers accountable. If you look a little further up, that means establishing the criteria and the standards and the competencies, and that means that when we sit down with a person who is, I'll use your literal front desk, who would be at the task level of the plan, it's cascading down from the strategic all the way to the task level, that person has an opportunity to say, what does my individual work plan look like in terms of my contribution to the ready plan? And if there are any competencies that need to be developed so that we consistently have those standards show up, so that we know that we're going to meet the criteria and the expectations, then we now know how to develop our workforce. Employee development and workforce development are two different things. We can develop an employee so that they can do their job and do it more effectively, and that typically centers on the technical piece. If we do workforce development, we're developing our workforce to execute on your plan. That's much more intentional. So that's the recommendation, but can I add a comma? You also mentioned funding a secondary position, and the thought behind the recommendation of having your structure be centered around strategy and performance with expertise in this space and thinking about that at the strategic level, just like in an HR, where you have your HR generalist who knows all of HR, you can very well look at that second position as an equity specialist. of HR, you can very well look at that second position as an equity specialist. And that equity specialist can partner, can coach, can do all kinds of things with leaders or with people in your organization to support to the plan. So it's a slight pivot, but I think it's the one that's not only going to get you to the place of implementation. We talk about our work being sustainable, and I think I said in our first meeting, our goal is not to just reach sustainability. You are going to be successful if it's durable. And durable means it is tied directly to your business outcomes. And because it's tied to your business outcomes, we've moved way beyond just equity outcomes, but we've translated equity outcomes to business outcomes to impact to your community. And I'll just pause. I hope I didn't take too long, President Kritzer.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Council Vice President Forsyth.
First, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Fields has had his hand up for a bit, so I will go after he does.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Fields, apologies. I was deeply listening to Ms. Page. Go ahead.
Yeah, no apology necessary. Hello, Anita. So I'm going to put this in my terms a bit, and let me, and you just tell me if I'm tracking. I do have a lot of experience in the whole idea of performance management. It's what I did for 11 years at King County and City of Seattle. And I understand exactly what you're saying. But here's my question. One of the things that I've learned, and there's a great book on this called The Messy Middle, is that we are really good at, typically organizations are very good at defining our goals, defining our outcomes, and celebrating those plans, those strategic plans. And then we somehow stumble through it, and we get to the end, and whatever the results are, we tend to celebrate that, too. But the real change and the real progress is made if we pay attention to what I'm calling the messy middle, which I think is what you're describing, that we have to be more mindful every single day that all people deserve, I'm going to put it emphatically, the love of human respect, and that we have to structure ourselves around and make those changes organizationally to address what I'm calling the messy middle. Am I hearing that correctly?
I believe so, sir.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. So I think everything that you've covered tonight has addressed a lot of the concerns that I think I came into this with the last time we met about making sure that we're giving everybody the proper tools and the right pathway, and making sure that we're lifting as we climb, right? Like that we're giving people the right opportunities to grow in their career path as well. So I'm really excited about what you've laid out tonight, and I thank you for your work. And I'm on board with the shift in that second position as well. I think that, I think the way you've laid it out sounds perfectly reasonable and meets all the expectations that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Do you have more to present also, or are we at the discussion now? Just wanted to make sure we get through your presentation, and I assume there'll be more discussion, too.
Well, less presentation and more update, some feedback, as just as we've heard from Vice President Forsyth, to kind of give us the direction of whether or not we're on the mark with what the council is thinking or way off the mark. As I said, we're holding on to our customized training piece of it, because depending on the structure we built, we need to do the training that's going to support that structure, meaning throughout with our managers and leaders. An example of that would be, if you say, we want an office of equity, we can talk to you about the pitfalls, or I would say the delta in that space, and then we can train leaders on equity. If you say, we understand that strategy and performance is the gap, and we are good at design, and we need to implement and manage, and we need to make sure we're performing to plan, then we need to add the elements of planning, strategic planning, strategic outcomes, role and responsibility in strategy at each appropriate level, and equity. So your feedback or what you're feeling and thinking at this point will help us in the customization for what it is that you're building and what it is that you need to operationalize.
Great, thank you. So I guess I'll ask councilmembers if you want to share some initial feedback specifically on this part of the proposal. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Excuse me. I, Ms. Page, you asked how we feel, and I feel a bit blindsided, just being frank about I want to just slow down the pace for a moment, because we've been listening for about 35 minutes, and we've been working toward one thing, and I understand and respect the process and your expertise to help us get to where we need to go. And as an organizational design nerd, 98% of everything you highlighted, including the needing it to be buried in every single individual's work, needing equity not to be this other thing over here, and when it's hard, we call it equity. I've seen that. The other thing that's happening tonight is our materials in no way prepared us to absorb this recommendation tonight and give you our complete feedback. We had a template of a PowerPoint presentation and a copy of the plan, and expected to hear, you know, an update. I was trying to take notes to capture your recommendations, but I'm not able to do that. And this will be like one of those meetings where I listen a couple of times to the meeting. So a written report, or if there have been reports prepared for the mayor's office that backs up these recommendations, that would be super, super helpful, as well as we should have this one pager posted for the public. So that's where I am, I am at this moment on that. And I also think it's important to have, I realize she's probably online, but it'd be great, the next time we do come back for this conversation, to be able to do it in partnership with the mayor, and I think that that's important, too. Here's why I'm very eager to continue this work. We've been asking, you know, for the direction that you laid out for years, so, and I believe from community, and you spoke earlier about being on the ground. Just today, I took in feedback from a community leader who said, I don't know who to call at the city. I used to call Cecilia for this. I don't know who to call. And so we definitely are, our community is looking for the person they can pick up the phone and know is the leader of this work. So that's important, too. In a way, I feel like we have promised our community an office of equity, and if we're going to shift that direction, that's a conversation we need to have, but I certainly don't feel comfortable endorsing that completely today just because I don't feel prepared to do so. That's where I am on this, respectfully. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
I always love these presentations. I was curious if you would be willing to share with us who is on the Respect team, so that we can say thank you to them.
So there are two teams that are working in the area of Respect. What is your identified Respect ambassadors who will roll out the training portion of it? And I would have to lean on our great COO to get those names in. I apologize only because I was in the room with them and I can tell your first names, but that's not going to necessarily direct you to who those folks are. And then the second is, we've engaged with welcoming Redmond around the plan, because as you know, they're eager to go to work, and we've highlighted all of the areas where they're doing the work or expected to do the work, and started creating the functional plan with them, and those members would, names would have to be provided as well by...
So I'll just put in and ask, I would love to meet them.
I'm happy to email you their names.
We sometimes have the opportunity to meet with some of the teams. A great presentation, maybe next time we see you. Thank you. Councilmember Nova Kamina.
Thank you. Typically, if one of my colleagues brings something up, and it's already been said, I don't feel the need to jump in. With Councilmember Stewart's point of feeling blindsided, again, I too, in agreement with the things that have been said, but for the relationship of partnership and the dynamics of partnership, and what has historically been, and the direction that we would like it to go, having a sense of partnership, I don't feel prepared whatsoever for this conversation. Again, when I was preparing for tonight's meeting, and I open up, and I see that it's a template of the PowerPoint, of the slide deck, and for it to be a large deviation from previous conversations, then it doesn't do much to build trust. And for it to be exactly what we're talking about is building trust and relationships is concerning for me. Where do we, where do we start the conversation at, at this point?
Do you have anything you wanted to say to that, or?
I would like to say that I am receiving all of the information and feedback and take ownership for how it's being presented to you. And some of the presentation and preparation is my lack of understanding around protocol. What my perspective is, is I'm sharing with you an update on where we've been, where we're at, and where we're going, with preliminary recommendations and letting you know that those are the recommendations. There is not a written port, there's not a formal report. We are scheduled, are scheduling to meet with our COO to give all of the deliverables and the debrief of those deliverables, and that has not happened yet. What we are doing is, along the way, is sharing those discoveries in the space. And when I say preliminary recommendation, and while I ask what you were thinking and feeling, and your feedback would matter, is if you said, we have promised the public that we're going to have an office of equity, then we work in that framework with the same recommendation of the skill set that I've mentioned has to be here. We can have an office of equity, we can have an equity director, we can have an equity coordinator, we can have any of those things, but it doesn't take away the performance gap that we have in the organization. So my deepest apology for anyone who felt blindsided or that it was a drastic pivot, it is just us responding to what we thought was update, and we may have done that outside of protocol or not with the appropriate level of communication ahead of time, and I will personally own that in that space.
Thank you. And I do want to say, I don't think, I think there were some technical challenges with the actual materials for the meeting, and I don't think that was necessarily on you. So I do want to note that, and that if, for the listening public, if you want to read through the ready plan, it is attached, it's actually in the top attachments connected to this meeting rather than in the item for this item. Even I didn't know where it was until this afternoon, although the council was emailed a copy of the ready plan. I think maybe what I'm hearing from my colleagues, I'll just reflect, is more an actual written set of recommendations around staffing and structure for the Office of Equity, which is kind of where we thought we'd be. So getting kind of what you're sharing with us written down so we could understand if there is a pivot, you know, what's the rationale behind that, so we could read and kind of absorb that. I think that would be something really helpful in the future as we kind of think through options, and maybe it's taking the feedback from tonight and coming back, so that way we could have some more discussion on that. I guess I will just, I'll add in my two cents here. Oh, I didn't actually see, well, I'll add my two cents after Councilmember Fields jumps in, because I like to go and make sure that all the councilmembers can speak for us, chair jump in. So Councilmember Fields, do you want to jump in on this?
I'm happy to have you put in your two cents, if it's up to you. I can jump in.
Okay, great. Well, then I will, and then I'll call on you again. I guess you did get to speak once so far, just want to make sure that we're giving everyone equal airtime. So I think I'm just going to kind of deepen on this discussion. In particular, at this moment, I think words have matter, or words matter for our community, and words matter clearly in our society, and I think there's a real sensitivity in our community to the fact that in some places, words, some leaders are trying to make words disappear, words that are really important, that have meaning, like respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I can understand maybe wanting, and so I think we just, we want to be thinking about that as we think about this going forward. I hear what you're saying, and I think it is important to say, what are the skills that we need in order to advance respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion and have a healthy organization? I guess I would flip it on its head to ask the question as we go forward, is, could we have an office of respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and talk with our staff and our community about how that is really an office that has to do with strategy and performance and organizational health and culture and transformation, and that we're going to do it with this great structure of respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion? And we're not kind of afraid of using those terms as a city? I just think that that's, but I, and in doing so, you know, build out someone who could, who could lead that office, who could have specialists, both in equity as well as, and I guess my other question for you would be, is two people enough? Do we need more to be able to advance this work? Do we need specialists, for example, in organizational transformation or the strategy and performance? Or is that something that the director can do? Because I think one of the questions that came up for us when we were budgeting was, what's the right sizing for doing this work? Obviously, it is investing in the staff across, but also making sure that we have something central to lead on. So that's kind of my, my two cents on it. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So I understand, let me describe it this way. I was surprised by the presentation. I was surprised by the direction that we seem, that you seem to be recommending to us. But I, and I understand everybody processes things based on their own experience and their own expectations. I didn't really have expectations. You were clear to us that you were going to do an evaluation and come up with recommendations on our best way to move forward. And I think we all agree that this is very important values that we're trying to preserve and protect and amplify. I don't think there's any, anyone who doesn't, who wants different outcomes or will back down, as Councilmember Kritzer put it. No one, I don't think there's anybody in this meeting who would think that that's a plan. So I understand the feelings of surprise. I don't think we were blindsided in the sense that you did your best evaluation of what, who the City of Redmond is around this space and around this work, and you came up with a recommendation on how we move forward. So for me, this is where the conversation should be, because the last time we talked, this is the work that you were going to do. And it makes, I will reiterate in my support of it, because, again, it makes it, it makes it meaningful in my mind, it makes it more sustainable in my mind, it makes it more complete in my mind. So this approach is that holistic, comprehensive thing that we all want. And yes, it's going to be a lot more work, and there's not going to be the easy answers, but those easy answers typically don't manifest the outcomes that we're looking for. So I appreciate what you've done, I understand what my colleagues are saying. I was surprised, I don't feel blindsided.
Councilmember Nova Kamina, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. I don't recall if we had any expected or proposed timeline of when we were going to be building out the Office of Equity. With that caveat, if we did, does this pivot set us back or lengthen that runway?
That's a really good question. Structurally, we can put everything in place that's needed because that was the deliverable. When the deliverable comes forward, the expectation was that we were going to do a workplace equity assessment, and we have done that. equity assessment, and we have done that. Because of those findings, there was an additional step taken to do an organizational health assessment. When I said that how you're thinking and feeling and the direction that you're leaning will help us with those next steps. If you say, "I want us to make sure we focus on organizational health," and I want to just kind of give a metaphor for that and what that means, we can build out the Equity Office just as we've contracted to do, and do that in the time that was stated, which to be ready to do recruitment, interview process, bring them into the office, and they have the structure to go to work. If you go into the organizational health side of it, there is some pre-work that needs to be done at the highest level of leadership. And what I mean by that is this has to be led from the front. And if there's not the identification of the criteria and the standards and the competency and some sort of expectations or performance management in that space, that person will come in and have to hold those higher than them or at a peer level to them accountable as their initial heavy lift. So that would be the difference in the timeline. We can deliver the Office of Equity just as we've contracted to do in the six-month period, assuming that you have time and availability for interviews. I know that August can be a difficult month, so that would be the only thing that throws off that timeline. So the initial thought was six months. I would like to come back and say, I'm with that, is that we mentioned that words matter, and they do. When we are saying Office of Strategy and Performance, I am not saying that is what you have to call it. I'm saying it needs to be an office that does strategy and performance. If we don't do strategy and performance, then the work that is done will be performative work. It will be the thing that we're saying that we're doing. So I don't want to shy away from words. As I said, we're not proposing to alter anything in the strategy. Be bold in the space. You've outlined what your plan is. I'm simply stating that that office has to be present. And again, if my apology hasn't been loud enough, I didn't come with the mindset of we're doing a presentation, I came with the mindset that we were having a discussion that provided you with updates. That's all that this is in this space. We have not written, as I said, any formal recommendation. This is the status of where we are. And while it's clear in some areas that I may not understand protocol and what the interaction looks like, materials, et cetera, to make sure that they're in the space, I also don't know the protocol for interacting with council if you want to see the actual assessment, if you want to see what was measured, if you want to see how it was scored, if you want to see what those intersections are that take you from the equity space into the organizational health, the correlation, the causation, and what those scores are. We're happy to share all of that. We just hadn't done it because we hadn't got to the point that said, here's our final recommendation, here's what supports that. So again, apologize, definitely do not want you to feel blindsided in any way, shape, or form. We don't want it to feel like we're doing a pivot. But I would be doing ourselves and this organization a disservice if I didn't call out the cultural gaps, the lack of performance management, the lack of accountability in the space. And if we go back to our basic premise, is there's correlation and causation between organizational health and effectiveness? And if I call this Ready Plan effectiveness, you are not healthy enough to deliver on it.
And I just want to bring attention to how I got to the dimensions and how we get to this finding that I brought to a need, and I said, "We have to say what I'm seeing." Because you, on, on a certain level, do all of the things that you would expect to see from people practicing equity. And so in that space, like a kind of an initial check, it would be, go forth, keep doing it. But the substantial work that happens under it is not there. And so the problem, and going back to the words having meaning, that you could commit something with words that people expect and not have the capacity to do it. And what would have happened is you'll say, "Well, on its face or on this, in this vision, it looked like we were healthy, and we weren't able to execute." And what you're seeing nationally, federally, and in the state as well, is the accountability that will fall strictly on equity. And then it justifies not doing equity at all. So when you get to a space that says, "Well, they said they had a plan, it looked good, I saw it, I talked to the person, but then six months later, I see no difference. I spent money and I see no difference," then you'll have to answer to what would have been said, "We did this work, we had this assessment. On its surface, it looked really strong. Six months later, you can't understand why the outcomes aren't coming." And the only scapegoat would be equity. And the only consequences we're seeing nationally and federally is to retract that work. And so it was, it was me who kind of raised the flag that says, "A lot of things that look really good, but are not sustainable later."
Chair. Councilmember Anderson, I think you had your hand up. I'll come back.
Thank you. I really had a couple of things to add, and the conversation has shifted a little bit, so I'll just kind of step back to where I was after I shared. I love your presentations, even though it was a template. I was sort of expecting that that correction would have happened, and that's okay. I was not surprised by the presentation, and I prefer listening to what you had to say, so I just wanted to say thank you again. I expected there'd be a reason for this presentation, and I don't want this conversation to devolve into sort of microaggressions about our inability to let you know that we were bothered about it by Friday when it was distributed to us. So I appreciate that you've offered to take ownership of it, and we also should have owned that idea to let you know in advance and not right before the meeting. So I'm not surprised about the recommendations either. Structural changes at the entry level to connect strategy to organizational goals make a whole lot of sense, and probably you and I have had this conversation before offline. I really love the specialist recommendation to support the Director of the Program Office. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the perspective on organizational health that you've been able to share with us this evening. I'm really looking forward to the formal report for that reason, and I appreciate the comment about capacity issues by Dr. A., by the way, great name. Here is why. It is because it gives the opportunity for staff to show up as their whole selves at work without shame or fear. And not only the executives and elected officials, staff can say, "She sees me, he sees me, and I feel safe," or that person doesn't see me. And that makes it a healthier workplace for everybody. So I wanted to say thank you, and I think overall, that's the objective that I look forward to hearing more about. Thanks.
Councilmember Nova Kamina?
Thank you. Following up on where the conversation was, I appreciate the distinction and the diction between, and I'll paraphrase it, is having the language and hearing what people are saying rather than how, what their behavior is and the actions that we take. Watch folks or organizations long enough, they'll tell you exactly who they are by their actions. Making sure that as an organization, as an enterprise, that we are making those behavioral shifts are, is essential to being able to have that sustainable change moving forward. So I appreciate, Dr. Thompson, your assessment on that and stating like, this is what we need moving forward to make those sustainable changes. Going back to my original question on timeline, because now we are talking about something that is going to be substantially greater than simply setting up a department and Office of Equity, which would have a lead time of about six months. So with this pivot to this recommendation, if this is the direction that we go, then what is that timeline? Because we do have an obligation to our community, because we have been saying, "We're going to have a contact person for you." So we've got on one side, the internal of the organization, and then we also have the external for the community members to be able to contact. So if that is a direction that we go in, in having an office that is, regardless of what we call it, that is performance-based, then what's the timeline on that?
We would like to consider that and then put forth a formal proposal for what that pivot or adjustment might look like for you, so that you understand not only the decision that you're making in the governance space, but also the consequences or outcomes of that decision, and you have the ability to actually measure. In terms of your recruitment process and how soon we get a job description out, which a part of the deliverable is writing the job description, and being a part of that, being a part, not myself, but Dr. A. in particular, of the interview process, sitting on the panel or whatever that means, also means that we rely on our HR partners, and we don't know what that timeline is. So we'd like to respectfully consult, make a recommendation that allows you to have all of that awareness when you're in the process of decision-making, if that is okay.
That's great, thank you. And to have, like to also request like that there would be a proposed stopgap to where, since that would be a longer duration and take longer, so then we can also make good on our word, because integrity is everything, then we can make good on our word in saying, "Okay, community, we hear you, and here is your, your point of contact in the meantime while we're doing this."
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsey?
Thank you. Just reflecting back on the last comments that Dr. A. commented on, I think that really perfectly encapsulated what my view of this situation has been. We have had people in this role. We have not set them up for success. I think the thing that you are laying out and the process that you are putting forward now provides that support and lays out a process that I can see that office, whatever we call it, being successful. So while it definitely was a lot to take in, and I fully respect that like we, we didn't necessarily have the materials and everything, I really truly am excited about what you have laid out, because I really do see the vision that you are putting forward, and from my perspective, it's the vision that I was hoping to see, so I'm actually really, really excited about what you've put forward tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And yeah, thank you for, thank you for this great conversation. I think I'll just weigh in, I think as we think, as you think about the roles and kind of the plans, just listening on this and thinking about our past experience with the roles thus far, I think what you've come to in terms of saying that we need to hire someone to lead this work with the expertise on organizational culture, transformation, on strategy, performance, so that we can drive that through, makes so much sense. And I think, you know, part of what we've seen even in the roles thus far is kind of the things that we actually see as split pieces within our own, within this Ready Plan that we, we had for review tonight, is there's part of our work that's doing the internal org transformation, but because we are a public service organization, there's the connecting with community, and especially because we are a community with such a great diversity of, of residents. That kind of piece is really important. I think that's what we've seen typically out of the two people that have been in the role of our DEI manager so far, has been that they've gravitated towards that community engagement role. So I guess from my perspective, it might just make sense to outline, kind of going back to what I had brought up earlier, like what are the needed roles within there? And I guess the question would be to the timeline question, if we do need to do the internal work, and we do need to kind of think about what that looks like and who you're going to, and who you're, you're going to bring on for that, or how much we might want to continue work with you on some of that for a little longer, could we have a parallel track on having some sort of role that would support the community engagement? I guess would be a question, or can we not do that?
Sorry, the audio dropped out for everyone online about a minute ago, and I want to make sure they're able to hear this conversation. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Can, I'll just see if anyone can hear us. Can you? Hello, can you hear us now? We'll just take a quick pause. Try to keep my thought. Hello, can you hear us now? Yes. Great, thank you. So I guess I'll just recap. The question was, or maybe, and you don't have to answer now, but it was, for your consideration is kind of, how do we think about those two aspects of the types of roles we'd want to do in this work of kind of those like community contacts, community kind of organization and outreach type of role? And then the like strategic manager type of role that's doing the internal transformation? And obviously, they're connected, but...
Absolutely. And the answer is, we can do anything in terms of parallel tracks and otherwise. And I think one piece of good news, that's not good news for others, is there, there are a lot of equity professionals who have been displaced, who are out there in the marketplace, one. So there's some hope that as we go through the recruiting process, there are great candidates out there. And I would think of those candidates, they would support our approach in saying that where they found their limitation was not being in the space that we're proposing that they be in. And coming out of a world where they've been powerfully disempowered, we hope that it's refreshing for them to have the right level of empowerment to drive to those outcomes. And the what are you thinking and feeling piece of it is, we need to hear these concerns. When Member Noeva Kamina is saying, "What is the timeline? What is the adjustment?" When you're saying, "Can we run parallel tracks?", those aren't concerns that we automatically know. Those are concerns that need to be brought to our awareness. Your thoughts and feelings about that are important. The other part is, as you even ponder what this preliminary proposal is, and when it becomes formal, it will be accompanied with the findings, as you're even pondering it, thinking about the commitment and the promise that you all have made to your community. And with that in mind, what is a skill set you'd like to see? What is a role you'd like them to play? And I know that you're not in the space of hiring or in operations, you are in the space of governance, and you are in the space of delivering the results to your community. So even that feedback for consideration, as those job descriptions are being formulated, et cetera, and us having the ability to even run those thoughts through the rubric and what we're seeing in terms of gaps, I think help us get a stronger offering and recruitment process and candidate selection. So in terms of next steps, that's where we were going. We would love to hear what those thoughts are in response to how we are going to close the gap and actually operationalize your plan to the place of impact, supported by metrics and outcomes. And then lastly, I would say, the community engagement piece is goal five that you all have. You all should have a tremendous amount of input in the community engagement space around the strategies, even if you're not, if we look at a RACI model, you look at what you're accountable and who's responsible, it may be someone else responsible for carrying out some of the work, but again, you're accountable for employee engagement, or I'm sorry, not employee engagement, for community engagement. So a strong council voice in that space in terms of direction and desire is invited.
Well, it sounds like we need to schedule some more additional follow-ups with you as, and I think maybe there's a little confusion partway through the meeting of where we're at, kind of in the process. And I think we will look forward to having you come back, hopefully with some good input from the council tonight on, on, you know, what, what it might look like to operationalize. In addition to, you know, being able to, we didn't really actually spend a lot of time on the Ready Plan itself, so we might want to look at that at a future study session. But, and then I think one of the things that you mentioned, which I think could be helpful for follow-up, and I'll just ask the council, is you mentioned that you weren't sure what kinds of information the council might want to see in order to assess and support the next step. So for example, understanding some of the outcomes of the assessment, I would put as a proposal that I think it would be interesting to be able to get, maybe not like every single piece of data that you gathered, but, but some of the main kind of takeaways and pieces that you got within the assessment, and happy to get other councilmembers' opinions on that. And I do see Councilmember Fields, I'll call you in a moment, but, but did want to see whether perhaps you could just send us a list of the types of materials you might be able to provide to council, so that way we could get a sense of what might be useful for the council. I think overall, having a little bit more information before we might make any decisions on kind of the, the future of this work would be helpful, but I will also open it up to fellow councilmembers. And I see Councilmember Fields has his hand up.
Thank you. I guess two things.
I guess two things I would like to point out in my closing comments. The first is that the concern from council about the community and the, and the community reassurance, for me, provides evidence of the need for the approach that are, that Anita and, and company have proposed to us. Because, because obviously there is a felt need that people need to contact the city to be reassured or understand or be, their concerns be addressed. So obviously there is a need because we on council are expressing a concern about not having it ready. This approach would make us, would, would, would fill that gap in the long run by having it across the entire organization. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of that approach. The other thing I just want to say is I think I, I really do want to thank you both for bringing to us an honest assessment. I think we have to, it's not always easy to listen to where we have gaps or where we aren't doing what we need to do. Your assessment was respectful, not necessarily critical, but it did say, here are some things that are missing and they need to be strengthened and they need to be remedied. If you're really going to do more than just be performative. And those were your words, Anita. And I completely 100% agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
Great. So council members, I guess we'll just, maybe we'll just do a show of thumbs. Is everyone supportive of getting some information, more information about the outcomes of the assessment that was performed? Great, okay, yeah, I'm seeing, seeing majority of thumbs. So if you want to send along some more details on that, and then, yeah, and then council leadership can work on scheduling another touch as you're ready to, to come back to us with additional updates. But I, I also want to just close out here unless anyone else has any other questions or comments to just say, thank you both for this deep work. Echo Councilmember Fields in that, you know, we, we have, have just gotten your expertise to be able to take a deep look at our city, an unfiltered look, and be able to give us the assessment of how we can, we can be a better organization, better serve our public and become more equitable, diverse and inclusive and respectful, right? And, and just really appreciate having your guidance on board to be able to do that in the time ahead as well.
Thank you for having us. We'll look forward to opportunity to send over and discuss information. I will put a request on the table. The complexity of the tool in terms of understanding the methodology is important. And I would say that preference would be that we walk you through the tools so there's complete understanding. It's not necessarily something we would send and say, oh, I get it. Having the expert here who, I, I don't like to use the word nerd, but it's the word that he uses, is so excited about some of the research and how he's approached it. And he gets me in the space and says, look at this backend piece of it and here's what I did and this is the meta-analysis. And I go, what does it say? That's all I want to know is what it says because that's not my role. But I think it would bring tremendous value to you to see the power of the tool itself, not just the outcome of, or the score of the assessment. Understanding the tool, I think will help bringing, will bring everything into perspective. So if we could respectfully ask for time to present those materials to you, we can get them over so you can absorb a bit. But just giving us the opportunity to actually walk through would be something that I would request.
That's fantastic. I, I think it would be great to be able to get the walkthrough of, of the tool since it's not only the tool that you used, but also the one that hopefully we'll continue to use over time.
You bought it.
Well, thank you so much. Do you have anything else you wanted to say, Dr. Thompson?
Just, just thank you for your commitment, one, right? Your continued time and, and the work. I, I will just continue to say that at this time, you, you see what's happening nationally, federally. It is just, I, I think it is the time to do it right and to be clear and, and speak clear, right? And it, it, it's, the time has passed to kind of say, hey, we're doing a thing, look at us, we need to make sure that the right thing is. And I think that this is the boldest move is to make sure that it is aligned the way it needs to be because there are real things that are pushing up against just any work in this field. And it'll be durable for that. But, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think if you heard some of the passion on our council tonight, hopefully it reflects to our community how deeply we all care about this work and want it to succeed. So we'll do that in partnership together.
Thank you. With that, we'll close out this item and let's take a five-minute recess until 8:21. Thanks.
These study sessions are to introduce proposed changes and provide context as well as receive any feedbacks and questions for you at this time. Next slide. This schedule is the anticipated order in how Public Works will be first discussing the proposed changes by code title. So tonight it's Title 10 and Title 12. Stakeholder engagement includes a let's connect page for people to provide feedback as well as having targeted discussions with specialized groups like One Redmond. The intent is to develop one code package as part of the APWA accreditation once all the title chapters have gone through this council review and stakeholder engagement. And our aim is to adopt the code in second quarter 2026. Next slide, Isabel.
Good evening. I'm Paul Cho, also with Public Works, Traffic Operations Safety and Engineering Manager. I'll be presenting some of the technical information, some changes and some of the backgrounds. In your packet, you'll see a table of, of changes that, that go a little bit more in-depth. And we've kind of labeled them substantive, operational and administrative. And the administrative really clarifies and updates language. Operational, we worked on aligning the code language to how things are currently being performed on a day-to-day basis. And then substantive, there may be some changes of meaning, there may be deleted sections, there may be new sections. So that's kind of the, the breakdown of that when you look through the table there. And so, next slide. Just starting out with Title 10, which goes over vehicle and traffic. When we went through there, there's a lot of information there and, and we did touch on a lot of the sections. There's a lot of sections that date back to the 1960s or even some sections in 1920s. So looking at things like a crosswalk is, is very ubiquitous right now. We know what it is, we know what it means. Back then, it was a fairly new concept possibly, and they referred to it as pedestrian safety zones. So we, we took a look at the information available to us versus when the code was originally written, if there were any changes made along the way. And really made it easier for staff and the public to be able to read the code and understand the code. So some of the, some of the ones that I, I'll highlight is, for example, we added some sections on micro mobility devices. That, that was, that's been fairly recent. We always talk about a bicycle, but you know, there are other wheeled devices that we use for transportation now. So we also made some changes to align with recent changes to state code so that we're not conflicting with that. For example, how a bicycle would treat a stop sign. We also, for example, like 10 dot 12, our code just specifies a $250 penalty for an infraction. But you know, we spent some time talking with Redmond PD and talk about, hey, when you look at speeding infractions or parking or crosswalk violations, you know, what code are you referencing and how are you processing that? And, and in our conversation, we learned that the citations reference state code and also reference state penalties. So we work to align our municipal code to, to not conflict with that and, and to follow the state. Traffic control devices and signals. So we have now very well-established federal and state and local references on traffic control devices. So those are signs, those are markings, those are stop, flashers, traffic signals. So all of these, in, in the existing code had its own little section and, and you know, one, two, three, four. What we did was we, we put them into one section, we provide. them into one section, we provided information on, you know, who has the authority to make changes, what kind of changes can they make, what kind of changes need to come to council. So for example, setting new speed limits, the traffic engineer after studies will propose a speed limit, and then council will approve that. Now, once council approves that, then the traffic engineer has the duty to post the new information out on the streets. So a lot of focus on, you know, authority, approval, and then the duties that follow. Okay, next So we also took a look at code as it related to non-motorized safety. That has been very, very important to us, and I know that it's been very, very important to council, and we wanted to bring special attention to it. Again, you know, we're looking at micro-mobility devices, you know, we set a speed limit for 5 miles per hour. Really, there's no magic to that, but what we wanted to do was set an expectation for, if you are on the sidewalk, you know, there's a sidewalk speed. And as long as you, there aren't any other code that restricts you from riding on the sidewalk, you'll ride at pedestrian speeds. And this is to provide safety for all users, so the pedestrians, as well as the mobile device user. We also remove specific curbside designation, this type of loading zone, that type of loading zone, that type of loading zone. So again, we reference back to, you know, who has the authority to set this zone, and then, once that zone is set, then what needs to follow, what kind of signage, what kind of curb painting or information to the public. And then also, we made some changes, like for example, 10.62 on temporary closures of roadways. That usually comes in the form of construction that needs to close the roadway to do some large utility work, or if there is an event that needs to close the road for a duration. We have a section of code now that is very specific and clear on how to go about obtaining that closure. We looked at the special events permit, which also has been used to close streets, but we wanted to make it align with the other section, so that one method of closure doesn't have one process, and another method of closure has a different process. The process is exactly the same. That way, it is easier for the public to understand, it's easier for a contractor to understand, and it's easier for staff to process. Okay. At this time, I'll turn the mic over to Patty for Title 12.
Good evening. I'm Patty Krittl, and I'm with Traffic Operations and Safety Engineering as well. And I'll be going over the proposed Title 12 changes. The proposed code changes to Title 12 originate from challenging experiences of a growing city where the code did not support the needs, and so we're trying to match those needs from these changes. So on street restoration, we added language to restore infrastructure to better-than-original condition, to comply with current federal, state, and local mandates. One example of this is like ADA ramps, when they get impacted, and then they need to be replaced, they need to be replaced to better-than-original condition. So because they need to match the federal, state, and local mandates. Another section that we added is the unpermitted work. So we've had instances where unpermitted modifications to the right-of-way have been done, and we need to clarify a process where the city can have this removed. And so, we added that language. And then, it also requires timely restoration of the right-of-way, so we added a notification and a timeline for it to be removed, and then also a reasonable cost recovery for the city, if the city has to go in and remove it. And then, we added a brand-new section for fixed items in the right-of-way. Resolution 1599 requests that we review our permitting processes for temporary barriers by others. This new section clarifies the process for any installation request by private parties. Then we also added 1213, emergency right-of-way use, and this new section establishes procedures for entities to conduct activities within the public right-of-way in emergency situations. This duplicates a process that's already stated in 1214, which is telecommunications. The last section that we added in 12 is for electricity and gas, and it's also a new section, and we added that to document our current operations regarding the policy for constructing, operating, and maintaining gas and electricity in the public right-of-way. And it outlines a requirement of a franchise agreement. So this has no change on how we're operating with PSE, so it's just documenting the process that we've gone through already with PSE.
Well, that concludes the section of going a little bit into detail for the substantive changes on Title 10 and Title 12. Your responses will be added, and our responses to your questions, will be added to our issues matrix after today. And we are done. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for this deep work to update our code. This is wonderful. Councilmember's questions. I see Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the work on this. And, you know, it's a fun look back, you know, horse-drawn carriages. Not something we're going to do very frequently in the future. Totally get it. I wanted to check in on an issue, and Paul, as you were speaking about this item, you seemed to indicate that maybe there's some wiggle room here. So I wanted to check in, I know that the staff were copied on the email from Mr. Wang, who checked in on the proposed speed limit for bicycles and micro-mobility on our sidewalks. The proposal at 5 miles per hour, if you're on the sidewalk and you're on your bicycle, sometimes you're on your bicycle on the sidewalk because the street's not safe. So is there wiggle room in going a little higher with that? The concern, of course, being if, you know, we're setting something, we don't want to end up with something that leaves us with an opportunity for discriminatory enforcement. And that was the concern raised in the email. So have you all had a chance to review that email?
Yes, I think, I mean, we talked about it. The proposal with 5 miles per hour, again, was the intent to document who we find more important, when there's something moving and somebody walking or rolling, and how we prioritize that if an incident comes up. So it doesn't necessarily have to be 5 miles per hour, so this is a conversation that you can propose that we don't put a specific goal. I mean, another conversation that we're following up with police is, how do we enforce it? And that's a reality that we have to face. So again, the intent of this draft is, and I want you to understand that our goal is to prioritize the most vulnerable in our situations.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
I really super appreciate that. Thank you. I would be in favor of language that designates pedestrians shall yield to micro-mobility, or excuse me, let me do it the other way, bicyclists shall yield to pedestrians whenever riding on the sidewalks.
That's already in there. So would you like, what I'm hearing is that we would be okay with that being said, and then maybe removing the 5 mile per hour?
Well, I am one council member, so I'll very much, the whole council's copied on this email, so I'll let my colleagues weigh in. But yes, I think this is just one of those situations where we want to be reasonable, we want to honor the intent, but we will never be able to enforce that, you know? So let's not set us up for something we can't follow through on. That's my take. Thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. And that was one of my notes that I had in, was who yields to whom the 5 mile an hour, the enforceability of it. You're not trying to take too much more, but if it's an instance where there is an accident, then, you know, it's easy to tell who was yielding to do, perhaps not easy to tell, but perhaps more enforceable to deal with that. Just a very small, minor detail, I did notice a Scrivener error on 10.12.010, delegate authority at the end of the paragraph. It looks like it returned and...
Oh, in a weird way.
On that, but on Section 10.52.214, that is the section on leaving unattended children parked or standing vehicles. My concern around that was, how did we get to that age, and is this another opportunity for discriminatory enforcement? Because the age that we're proposing that we go up to is any child younger than 16?
I'm going to let Isabel answer, because we've had that conversation. I believe the answer is we're adjusting to what the state says, has changed it to. Isabel, do you want to type if you can? But I believe that's the answer we talked about.
Yes, that is correct.
And if it's in state...
Yes, that is correct.
Isabel, could you repeat that?
Yes, that is correct. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
And also, I deeply appreciate the updated language, not only with the animal-drawn vehicles, making sure that that is taken out, but also language such as obedience to officer, and changing that out to compliance with lawful orders. So I deeply appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just unless, do you have a comment on the speed conversation, Council Vice President Forsyth? I see you have your hand up. I just had a quick comment, so I thought I'd jump in while we're on that topic. Can you just speak briefly, you mentioned the 5 miles per hour for on-sidewalk, but there's also a 15 miles per hour on shared-use paths? And that seems to me like another place where most likely, most bikes will exceed that if there's not someone else in their way. So is it kind of similar thinking? Can you share just a brief comment on that as well?
I believe the regional trails in King County already have that 15 mile per hour, so this is a part of the aligning with other jurisdictions. So maybe the question is, do we have to state it in like a duplication in the city code, if it's a King County?
Okay, yeah. And actually, a follow-up to Councilmember Nueva Camina's question around the age is, so are we required to align with state law, or are we just trying to align with state law on that one?
The way I've interpreted, when there is a state, or even a county bigger than a city, we have to apply that statute, and we can make it stricter. So, but in the age thing, I'm not sure which way is stricter. So we can decide to make it stricter, but I'm not sure if we're lowering the age or not.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Mr. Cho, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so, you know, I think the general thought is, is that if you're a licensed driver, you have to be 16 to be a licensed driver, and then you are the operator of that vehicle. So you are responsible for the vehicle and its content. And so, if you're under 16, you know, you're not operating that vehicle. And so, you're there, or a pet is there, because of a licensed driver.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Follow-up to that, we're seeing more and more 16-year-olds that do not have licenses, plus in the state, if, once you do get your license, you need six months before you can have anybody who is not a licensed driver under the age of, I believe, 18. So we've got, that doesn't work.
Well, we'll take a look at a rephrasing. So again, the intent is clear for where the city is coming from.
And again, my biggest concern is that I see this very much as a discriminatory issue, and it gives the city a lot of leeway to discriminate against folks. And I'm speaking as a parent and raising four children. And I see many, many times where my children were not 16, and not because of negligence. However, this would very much give somebody an opportunity to report me as a parent, where it was not a false judgment call.
Yep, we'll take a look.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I would tend to agree with, on that last point, with Councilmember Nueva Camina. I mean, my initial question for that, in response to that age, was, what's the minimum age for someone to be home babysitting their siblings? Like, maybe we go with something like that. But I definitely do see a parent running into a grocery store, and a preteen is like, I'm not going into that store, and then you have an issue. So I definitely want to make sure we're being very mindful of all those situations. And it is written in there that like willful is in there, so I think that helps, but I think the root problem is still there. Working my way up my list, the part about adequate ventilation for the vehicle, I don't think that quite addresses what my concern was, which the vehicles that have the, like, the dog setting for air conditioning. My concern is adequate ventilation means different things to different people. So someone is going to crack their window an inch, where we know that that's not necessarily enough for a dog to survive if they leave the dog in the car on a 90-degree day for 40 minutes. So maybe just look at how that language can be remodified. Okay, going back down my list the other way, I really appreciate all the thorough responses to my massive amount of questions. So just put that out there first. I know I had a lot. The yield for the bike, I'm not necessarily certain that language at the stop sign is clear enough. Sorry, I'm trying to bounce him back and forth between these documents. I think in C, it definitely says, when micro-mobility devices treat a stop sign as a yield sign, it is not applicable to. But I think in Section B, where it says, devices approaching a stop sign must either stop or follow the requirements for approaching a yield sign, to me, that still reads as though they're just approaching a yield sign and not approaching a stop sign as a yield sign, as the law allows. Does that make sense?
I think your perspective is clear, and we'll take, we won't wordsmith it tonight, but yes.
Thank you. And then, I had a question on the parking fees. I know you responded that we're just removing the geographical zones, but then does that imply that the entire city is now open to parking fees? I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on council.
So, yeah, we didn't change the meaning of the section. We just took away, right, Northeast 85th Street, right? There is a parking program, and so, and the parking program will look at fee, no fee, and then come to council for approval of any new fees. And that's already in the code, and we think that that works well. But having the geographic references really limits us where we can apply, and any time that we, for example, like, you know, over, like, we're going to do some more, and then we have to come to council for every time we have a 1/52 that we want to add to it.
Got it.
And it's not specific about, you know, what department, you know, planning, transportation planning, they are doing a parking study, and they may be coming forward at a future date with a program, or something that is meeting a need in the future. And we just want to make sure that the code supports that, and that they can go ahead and propose parking restrictions and a fee associated with it.
Okay, so it basically just removes that restriction from this part of the code, but we still have a different process for if we're going to implement
Yes.
more parking fee zones?
Correct.
Okay, so this just means we don't have to update code twice. Love that.
Yes, twice, three times, four times.
Got it. Love that. Okay. And then the part about the data governance policy, I think I just heard you say... And then the part about the data governance policy, I think I just heard you say this is going to be adopted in Q2 of '26. And do we know the timeline we're looking for the data governance policy, end of this year? I know it's not you, I'm sorry.
I don't recall, but I thought we thought about it. But we would align to, we knew that was coming in the conversations in the past.
Again, just don't want to make sure we're not having to redo this and modify it after so that doubling of efforts, okay. Thank you. And then I still think I might want to reach out to you all separately on the right-of-way conversation, just to have a bit more detailed conversation on that. Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to get clarity on that conversation around the parking governance. And I think you got clarity, but I wasn't totally clear. So if, say, a street that currently doesn't have an hourly parking restriction or a sign's posted on it, if the traffic engineer deems that there should be some sort of restriction, can you just walk us through what the process would be and how council would or wouldn't be involved?
Sure. And it could be the traffic engineer or their designee. So it doesn't have to be, for example, myself. It could be, for example, Michael Hints that brings forward a parking program amendment or a new parking program. So, for example, in the Marymore area, the parking is going to be higher, higher premium. And so the city wants to establish a new parking fee or two-hour restriction or permitted parking for residents or something to that effect, then they would bring that package together, a proposal, a proposal fee, and then they would have to come to council, present it. Council will have to review it and approve it and then adopt the new fee.
Great, thank you. And so when we say fee, that might be, for example, that we post a sign saying two-hour restriction, and you don't have to pay for the parking, but should you go over that, there would be a fee? Is that correct?
So there could be penalties and there could be a permit, like a permit fee, yeah.
Great, okay, wonderful.
This is also just really aligning that we know that there's other efforts that TPNE is leading. So if it all aligns, we could all do it, all, again, code update once. But we, this is, we wanted to come first and have this discussion. So we will be collaborating consistently with them.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there other questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Sorry, just real quick, I just wanted to say thank you for all the ads on, you know, making sure that car vehicles stop while pedestrians are in the crosswalks and the ADA parking addition. There were a lot of things that I had questioned that you also added to these sections, so I just really wanted to say thank you and I appreciate it.
This is great work. I'm not seeing other hands raised, so I'll just ask one other question on parking. So I noticed that you made the change for unposted areas or just kind of for overall to go from 24 to 72 hours. Can you speak a little bit more to the philosophy behind that change?
So looking, again, kind of looking at the intent and looking at how we're operating, we don't want, we don't want people to store their vehicles on the street, but we understand that you have needs for parking on-street where there aren't any restrictions. So the 24-hour, you know, the intent was you go to work or you go to do something, you know, however you go about your business, and then, so you're moving your vehicle, and then in the evening, you're parking it again. With weekends, with telecommuting, there may be, and especially, we are trying to encourage non-mobilized mobility, leave your car at home type of thing. And so we don't want to run up against, you know, we don't want to be chasing people parking their cars for several days over the weekend, or they're telecommuting that week, and we don't want to be going after those parked cars. You know, we're really looking for cars that are being stored on-street, abandoned vehicles, you know, those, so, but not people who are, happen to leave their car parked for several days because they're taking the bus or they're not working or they're not doing any errands or anything like that, or they're walking.
Thank you, that's a fantastic explanation. Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any. So I expect we'll see you back for the next pieces of this work, I think in July. Is that right?
Yes, that's the intent. We have some internal management changes, so which topics we will bring might change, but you will have plenty of time to know that. That's the intent.
Great, well, thank you. And I'll just remind the council, so we'll be working on a bunch of different pieces of this work going forward. And so up until that time, if you have other questions on what we covered tonight, feel free to email the staff. And with that, we'll say thank you and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the tree canopy update. So we're going to invite the whole tree team up to come and join us. Got extra space over here, so. That sounds good. Yeah, come sit. If we have room, come sit. All right, and I will turn it over to Lorene Hamilton, our Parks and Recreation Director, to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. I am Director Lorene Hamilton, Parks and Recreation. I'm joined this evening by a wonderful group of humans from across our city. It has been requested by City Council and has also been a desire of this team to come forward and to share a comprehensive tree canopy strategic plan update. Tree canopy touches a number of departments across the city and is a topic of huge interest, both to City Council, our community, as well as our staff. And so this team meets together on a regular basis, and so they have come together to share, hopefully, and answer a bunch of questions about what are we doing with our tree canopy? And so I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay Falconburg, our Parks Planning Manager, to kick this off, and then, of course, we'll have time for questions at the end.
Awesome, thank you, Lorene. Hello, City Council members. I'm Lindsay Falconburg, Parks Planning Manager, and I'm really excited that you're having us here tonight to talk about the tree canopy strategic plan. We have a whole crew of awesome folks who have been doing really hard work on this. And, yeah, we're excited to share with you all how we're working towards our tree canopy expansion goal. So I'm just going to share a little bit about where we're headed tonight. I'm going to start with an introduction, give a little summary refresher on the tree canopy strategic plan, and then also share some past and current conditions of where we've been since this plan was adopted in 2019, just to kind of set the contextual stage. And then I'm going to turn it over to hear from folks who have been putting in the work to kind of fulfill the big-picture goal of this plan. And so we're going to hear from Meg to talk about Parks Tree Canopy expansion efforts and our health risk assessment and mitigation work that we've been doing. We're also, Tom couldn't be here tonight, Tom Hardy from Public Works, so I'm going to share some of his input around what Public Works has been doing in terms of tree canopy expansion efforts. Maya is going to talk about the Green Redmond Partnership and Program, and Joe is going to talk about our tree giveaway and some of our public education opportunities. Jenny LeBeck also couldn't be here tonight to talk about the ESAP update, and so I'm going to share a little bit from her about how we're kind of weaving some tree canopy community engagement work into that refresh. And then we're going to wrap up some of our updates by hearing from Lauren and Cameron about the tree code update. And then we'll wrap the whole thing by talking about some of our future opportunities, actions, projects, events that are in the upcoming works to understand where this is headed, and then have some time for questions at the end. So, oh, we went too far. Okay, so to start, just a little bit about the tree canopy strategic plan, hopefully all of you got a chance to dive back into it. But the plan, as you know, was finalized in 2019 and adopted at that point in time. It really kicks, the plan kicks off by talking about the value of trees from both an economic and environmental perspective, and also gives the goal of increasing our canopy cover in the city of Redmond to 40% by 2050. And the plan lays out that the way to get there is through education, increasing our canopy cover, and maintaining what we currently have. In order to carry that out, it outlines seven different strategies. Those strategies are education and awareness, increased city-led planting, which specifically means planting on public property, private planting incentives, which specifically means increasing planting on private property, regulations, city acquisition of lands, partnerships and volunteers, and data analysis. And then it also offers a much more detailed implementation plan that specifies actions and deliverables that city staff could follow in order to carry out those strategies, and it calls out maintenance as an important priority. The plan, as I mentioned, was adopted, oh, jumpy arrow. Okay, the plan was adopted in 2019, and at that point in time, we had a 38.1% canopy cover in the city of Redmond. Shortly after the plan was adopted, COVID-19 hit, and that presented a lot of challenges to the city in general. There were staff turnover, there were budget cuts, and that created some challenging conditions within which to carry out this plan. And I think, I think those conditions were especially challenging for cross-departmental work, which is what this plan requires in order for it to happen. But I want to stress that despite those challenges, multiple people on multiple different teams have worked really hard to continue to achieve accomplishments over the last couple of years. So I, you know, as I've worked to wrap my brain around where we've been and what's happened, I'm super impressed with the way this work has been carried forward despite COVID-19 challenges. In 2019, the city also began work on a tree code update, and then that was paused in 2022 in order to allow us to observe the outcomes of some neighboring jurisdictions who were attempting similar updates. And then I also want to point out that another thing that happened over the last couple of years was Strategy G was, which is data analysis, there were a number of steps taken to fulfill that strategy. We did aerial photography in 2021 and 2023. And in 2021, the aerial photography showed that our canopy cover was at 37.5%, and in 2023 that it was at 37.4%. That's a loss of about 17 acres. And that actually really aligns with what is called out in the tree canopy plan, that aligns with both the predictions around the amount of coverage that we would lose every single year, but also it calls out the fact that it was predicted that we would see a dip in canopy cover before we would see an increase, and that that dip could last for up to a decade. And so I think, you know, based off the data that we have right now, you know, it seems to be aligning with what the authors of the plan expected. There is currently funding for another round of aerial photography that will take place in 2026. And so with some of that context, we're going to move into sharing some of the deliverables that the team has been working on, and I'm going to first pass it off to Meg to talk about Park Ops tree canopy expansion efforts.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Meg Angivine. I am a Parks Maintenance and Operations Supervisor that oversees the urban forestry program, among other things. Speaking to the tree canopy expansion, in 2019, Park Operations contracted the planting of four acres of new canopy, three acres at Perrigo Park and an acre at Farnham-Birder Park. We currently track our street tree pruning and through reporting to GIS for inclusion in the street tree inspection map. During the 2019 to 2024 window, we've pruned an average of 1,215 trees per year. Also during that window, we've planted an average of 531 trees per year, which includes the Green Redmond Partnership and park and street tree replacements. These are tracked through Cedar, which is a software platform for the Green Redmond Partnership, and also through Park Operations records. We worked with a consultant to complete the 2024 Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management Plan. Some of the outcomes of this plan were the Appendix C of the plan, which includes a list of climate-resistant tree species sorted by size and listing the species' characteristics and tree planting and maintenance requirements. This document also identified potential areas for canopy increase. Park staff have evaluated, ranked, and prioritized potential areas in Redmond parks for in-house and contracted canopy increase projects for future implementation beginning as soon as fall of 2025. Finally, as related to volunteer programming, Park Operations supported several restoration-focused volunteer work parties for corporate and school groups each year, and hosted annual Arbor Day planting events, including tree planting and tree care activities.
Can I just jump in real fast? I also would like to just acknowledge that Meg Angivine was also the person who kept Green Redmond moving forward after Forterra removed support and stopped supporting Green Redmond partnerships. And so as we were waiting to bring Maya on, Meg worked very, very hard to keep those efforts going, and we really did not see a change in that. And so I just want, Meg doesn't get recognition for that very much. I want to take a moment to just say thank you to Meg for keeping that Green Redmond program going while we were down some support.
Lorene, and I have to give credit to Chris Tullan and who, too, who is our Urban Forestry Lead Worker, who is instrumental in keeping that going.
Awesome, and Meg is also going to talk about the tree health risk assessment and mitigation work.
So during the 2023-2024 budget, the city completed a comprehensive tree health risk assessment of approximately 18,000 city-owned trees in parks, rights-of-way, open spaces, and street trees. Assessment focused on specific criteria, including having a trunk diameter of 12 inches or greater and located within striking distance of targets such as buildings and other structures, streets, and parking spaces. 211 trees were identified as needing mitigation, such as pruning and limbing, wildlife snagging, and tree removal. Phase one mitigation was completed in 2024, addressing the 35 highest priority trees. Phase two mitigation has begun. It'll be ongoing through 2025, and that was addressing the next 52 highest priority trees. Phase three mitigation will continue in 2026.
Awesome, thank you, Meg. Like I said, Tom Hardy couldn't be here tonight, but they have been doing incredible work over there in Public Works on their tree canopy expansion efforts, so I'm excited to share a little bit of what they've been working on. Public Works planted 14,764 trees since 2019, and that covers about 16.1 acres. And they have been really achieving this level of planting through a variety of partnerships that they have. The majority of trees that they have planted were planted in stream buffers by the Washington Conservation Corps crews that they work with during that time period. And they have also partnered with Earth Corps, who's hosted 12 volunteer events since 2019 to do both planting and invasive removal projects for the city. And Tom wanted me to share an example of a successful project that kind of highlights how all of these partnerships can work together. And so in the fall of 2024, there was a big planting project that took place in Bear Creek Park. The Washington Conservation Corps crew prepped that site for planting, and then Earth Corps led two volunteer planting events, and Public Works staff led another volunteer planting event in order to plant an acre of land and stream buffer in that area. So, yeah, they've been working hard over there at Public Works, lots of trees in the ground, which is exciting. And speaking of volunteers, I'm going to pass it to Maya next to talk about the Green Redmond program.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Maya Clem. I'm the volunteer in Green Redmond Partnership Coordinator. Many of you are probably aware that the Green Redmond Partnership is a collaborative effort to create and steward healthy forests on our public spaces in Redmond. The partnership was created in 2007, and then the 20-year stewardship plan was adopted in 2009. The partnership, as Lindsay mentioned, consists of city staff, nonprofit organizations, community groups, schools, companies, as well as thousands of volunteers every year. All these partners work together to steward these areas, and there are currently 996 acres enrolled in active management across the city. The Green Redmond Partnership supports multiple of the tree canopy strategies outlined in the strategic plan. The basis of the program, as the name suggests, is partnerships and volunteers. There are many partners involved in the partnership, including the Washington Conservation Corps and Earth Corps that Lindsay mentioned. Also, now that this position is in-house to the city, we're working to solidify new partnerships and bring new partners onboard to be able to expand the work that we're doing. Since 2009, more than 40,000 volunteer hours have been contributed through the Green Redmond Partnership, and those numbers continue to go up every year. We increased city-led planting on public property by planting hundreds of trees every year. Since 2009, we've planted 15,021 trees. Since 2009, we've planted 15,021 trees, which is super exciting. And we will continue to plant more trees every year. These trees have been planted by city staff, partner organizations, and volunteers. We also support education and awareness. All of the participants in Green Redmond volunteer events, hopefully, leave those events with an increased awareness and understanding of the importance of our urban forests and how they can steward those forests, both in these public spaces and also in their private property as well. In addition to these volunteer events, we host dozens of volunteer events every year. And in addition to those, we host educational tree walks and plant walks and educational opportunities. Just this year, we've already partnered a couple of times with the Parks and Trails Youth Advocates to create youth-specific educational opportunities, and we plan to continue that work. And then finally, as Meg mentioned, the program also supports data analysis through our ArcGIS online mapping and through our diligent record-keeping in our database called Cedar that allows for city staff, as well as partner organizations and those volunteers who have adopted sites, to report that data to us. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Maya. Up next, Joe is going to talk about our tree giveaway.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Nelson, a program assistant who is implementing Redmond's first tree giveaway program. The application opens on July 12, and the giveaway will be held on Saturday, September 27, at the Redmond Municipal Campus. Participants will be required to apply in advance of the tree giveaway as quantities are limited. We are partnering with a local nonprofit, 300 Trees, to help with the event. Our goal is to give away a total of 500 climate-resilient and mostly native trees to help the city achieve its 40% tree canopy goal by 2050. There will be a robust educational component for the tree giveaway to ensure long-term health and success. This includes a tree planting care guide and a tree catalog outlining lighting requirements, mature tree size, and optimal soil conditions. We are partnering with a nonprofit, Plant Amnesty, that facilitate pruning and comprehensive care workshops for giveaway participants and Redmond residents. Finally, there will be opportunities for community members to volunteer at the event. We'll be sharing out more information on that later this summer. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Okay, and again, Jenny LeBeck couldn't be here, but as you may know, the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan is getting a refresh. And we were excited, you know, whenever we can get ongoing community engagement included somewhere about trees to understand, you know, pulse check, how are people feeling about, yeah, where's the community at on trees? How do they want to receive information? Where are they at in terms of planting trees on their private property? We want to take advantage of that. And this refresh was a great opportunity for us to get a couple of questions out there to the community. And so the ESAP includes a community questionnaire, and we have a couple of questions in there specifically centered around barriers for folks planting on private property and help us understand how we can eliminate those barriers. There's also a community workshop on July 16 to help better understand priorities around sustainability in general, but trees will be part of that mix. And then the ESAP will, Refresh will have a table at Derby Days as well on July 12 to do some of that public engagement work. And then lastly here for updates, we're going to go to Lauren. And Cameron, if you, do you want to come up here, or no, you're good? Lauren's got it. To talk about the tree code update, yeah, pass it up to you.
I'm Lauren Anderson, Senior Planner, and I'm working on the tree code update. So city staff began the tree code update back in 2020. It was then put on hold in 2022 after receiving recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. We restarted the process earlier this year. We have gathered staff feedback and currently are in our public engagement phase. We just completed our first open office hour this evening. We are, we're excited to have the opportunity to connect with the community at this stage in the process. During the meeting, we received written public comments that will be combined with the information gathered through our Let's Connect webpage. On Friday, we will conduct a second open office hour to provide additional opportunity for feedback. Having these connection points with the community is a crucial element in ensuring progression of the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan on its current timeline. Our next step is to revise the current code while considering the comments received from the community and staff. We'll be bringing the draft code to the Technical Committee and then the Planning Commission in winter 2025. The goal is to bring this forward to City Council in Q1 2026. Some high-level proposed changes includes increasing the tree replacement ratios, increase in tree protection measures, expanding how the tree fee-in-loe fund can be used, adding definitions for clarity, and then making sure the code is in alignment with Redmond 2050, and to accommodate the recent middle housing code updates, as well as our growth targets.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, so we've got for updates. And I just want to point out a couple of upcoming opportunities, projects, events, actions that are going to be taking place. Meg mentioned, but 2025 and 2026, there are plans to do contracted tree mitigation work and to use CIP-funded tree canopy expansion money to continue doing work on public lands around expanding tree, or tree canopy. The, the tree, or the tree giveaway is on September 27, as Joe mentioned. And then Green Redmond Day will be on October 25. New forest steward onboarding through the Green Redmond Partnership will happen in early 2026. And we're also going to host a series of public workshops with Plant Amnesty in the spring of 2026 to help folks who receive trees during the tree giveaway understand how to care for their trees in perpetuity. We're looking forward to receiving the data from the ESAP refresh to understand a little bit more about how we can decrease those barriers to private property owners to plant trees on their property. And as Lauren mentioned, there are, as we go through this tree code update process, there are public engagement opportunities. And so there were office hours today. And there will also be office hours on June 27, 7, from 3 to 4 p.m. And we're also really looking forward to that tree, tree code update and many of the impacts that that will have on our ability to carry out this work, specifically around how the, I mean, many of those updates are really exciting. I think when we think about the plan, some of the ways that the fee-in-loe money could be used after the update happens are really exciting. And then lastly, I'll just mention that we have more staff capacity to carry out this work than we've maybe had in the past. My position was vacant for about a year and a half. And in my role description, it really called out helping to organize this cross-departmental work and make sure that has strategic direction. As I mentioned, lots of folks have been carrying out this work, and they've been orchestrated through these regular tree team meetings. And there hasn't really been a position that's been able to kind of steer the ship. And so that is something that I'm really excited to do in my role. And I'm also three months into my position, so I'm just really beginning to wrap my arms around this work. But it's been incredible to see what has been accomplished so far. And I also think, you know, I'm acknowledging the fact that this is a small sliver of what I do. And so we're also really, you know, still excited about having dedicated staff support to lead this plan and to lead the, kind of this cross-departmental work. And there is a 2027-2028 Budget Ask targeting a program administrator that would be focused on urban forestry. I also want to acknowledge Maya's role with the Green Redmond Partnership and just the capacity that that adds, having that in-house, and the way that that just gives us a lot of space to take a comprehensive look at volunteer coordination and kind of big-picture urban forestry across the city. We've also been really lucky to have a Civic Spark Fellow in Joe this last year and are looking to have a Civic Spark Fellow next year as well in order to continue to have capacity around the tree giveaway program and hopefully make that an annual event. But also to continue to do education and public outreach around trees. And then this is not necessarily added capacity, but I just want to acknowledge how important, again, our partnerships with Washington Conservation Corps and EarthCore and similar groups are in order to help us get trees in the ground and to run volunteer events. We really couldn't have put the amount of trees into the ground that we have without them. So they are really important. So those are just some of the opportunities that lie ahead. But, you know, I think with this incredible team, there are many more to come. And we are excited. Thank you all for listening, excited to hear any questions and thoughts that you have.
Thank you so much for that, that great presentation to you all. And special welcome to Maya. I know this is the first time I think you've come to council, and we've all been really excited to get to know you and to have this position of a full-time volunteer coordinator filled since it was an initiative of council to put that in the budget. And just excited about that, but excited about all of you being here. So thank you so much for this great work. And I will just, before we go to questions, we'll note for the listening public, I think it was mentioned briefly about our ESAP tracking, but definitely check out on the Environmental Sustainability Data Dashboard. There's some really good maps and information on, on our actual tree canopy progress. And you can look at it, both street trees as well as kind of overall progress by neighborhoods in the city. So it's a really useful tool. With that, I'll go to questions from council. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. And of course, we can't be talking about trees and the tree canopy without also acknowledging Mr. Tuchek over there, sitting in chair. So thank you for joining us and being in for moral support. I appreciate that. I had a question, and I don't, no pun intended, I don't know if it's too far in the weeds or not. However, we've got some anecdotal data stating that as we've got new builds coming into, into single-family areas, that the new builds are being built closer to the property line and thus taking out trees. And of course, while that's anecdotal, anecdotal data, do we have any empirical data on that?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's something that we can look into.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Sure. Thank you so much. I really appreciate this overview. And Lindsay, by way of having you as team captain, I'm really glad to see you facilitating the whole team coming together. And like the council president said, Maya, you're going to be one of the most popular folks for us to communicate with because people want to get involved. And so especially come Derby Days, we'll be filling your inbox. So very excited. I came to this conversation tonight kind of with a few big-picture questions bumping around in my head, knowing that this plan was adopted right before the pandemic. Where are we, what have we accomplished with that six-year implementation plan? And, and can we pick this up now? And you have very artfully brought us up to date on where we are with things. And I'm very excited and eager to support the budget proposal moving forward to make sure that we really can have someone to hold this strategy together. As we come back to this and come back to it, kind of like a, hopefully somewhat annual cadence of reviewing this because it is one of the most requested topics from the public. So again, it's something that folks want to hear about. I'll, I'll start next year to be looking for, you know, some data that helps us understand where we are in that rate of loss that is on page 14 of the plan. And when do we flip from loss to gain? And what's it going to take? And I, I look forward to the day when we get to celebrate that, you know, that flip in the switch. And I would like at some point for us to have a really clear report back to community on this report. This implementation plan with seven parts to it, is each part completed or not? Is it outstanding or not? And just to make sure that we're reporting back, just, just like we are here today. So really do appreciate that. And then my last question is just actually for Meg. We get a lot of interest in having additional shade added to some of these parks. So as you've described, some of the, the tree canopy that's already been added or the plantings that have occurred, I'm hearing like Perrigo and, and Farrow McBerter and bigger sections. What is the thinking on some of the smaller parks in the centers? I'm thinking like downtown, we hear about quite a bit. Maybe some additional shade added at some point down there. Estera Park has room in the middle of that giant field. We've got some interest there. So some of these smaller parks, are they likely to end up on, on a list to get future plantings?
Yeah, so the CRSV.
Climate Resiliency and Sustainability in Vegetation Management.
Award-winning plan.
Award-winning plan.
Award-winning plan. It identified a lot of areas in the city where we have opportunities for planting. And many of those are in the parks. So, and, and a broad range of parks, some of the smaller parks as well, you know, some, some more urban areas. So those have been identified. Our crew actually went through and rated them based on, you know, do they have available irrigation? How much work is going to be required to prepare those areas for planting? And so we're currently in the process. We have, we've had meetings already and have meetings scheduled to continue moving this process forward and evaluating those sites and trying to, you know, maximize what we can do.
Super appreciate that. And I'll go take a look at the, the list and the award-winning plan also. Thank you for that navigation. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And if I may, we, but when we had a park planning manager previously, we came and updated council on a quarterly basis on the tree canopy plan. And that, of course, as Lindsay explained, we had quite a bit of staffing turnover and gappage. Official word, gappage. So we will intend to come through committee of the whole on hopefully a quarterly basis, but at least twice a year. And there may even be times where, similar to when Jenny LeBeck brings ESAP updates their information only and a written update, we can always provide those as well. So if you do feel as though there's an, a gap in information for this particular topic, please do let us know because as I hope staff have shown tonight, there's so much progress that is happening. And so if we can help fill those gaps for you all to communicate with the public, we are more than happy to do so.
Great. Well, look forward to seeing you more. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. And yeah, I think twice, twice a year sounds good with written updates. Sounds perfectly fine. And I do appreciate this update since it has been a while. And it is exciting to see all of the work that you all are doing to help us meet our goals. So a couple of things that I noticed, there was a lot of data and a lot of numbers that you all shared in your talking points that weren't in the presentation. So if we can get some of that information so that we can have those at our fingertips to share with our public, that would be very helpful from my perspective. And I'm sure you said it, and I'm sure I missed it, but you, you talked about the dipage and how we were anticipating seeing that. What is the current level?
Well, so the, the last aerial photography that happened was in 2023. So that's our most recent data point. And that was at 20, was it 30, sorry, 37.4, yeah. And so, you know, we have to run that aerial photography again. And LiDAR is the other way that we measure tree canopy, and we are due for a LiDAR data analysis as well. And so both of those things need to happen in the very near future in order to determine what our current tree canopy is at.
Sounds good. Thanks for that. And then the only other thing I was looking at was the tree code update. I know we were, council in '22 was on the precipice of passing that. So when you come back to us with the information, it would be nice to know the results of the lawsuits that happened in the other cities so that we have that full context of what was being challenged, what was the outcome, why it was being challenged, and how we're addressing it. Because I know there were a lot of us that were very interested in passing it and not pausing the process. So appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. And, and yeah, as a reminder, we, we had it slated to go to consent, and then it got pulled off. So I think we did, I appreciated the update tonight on kind of why it is that it's now going back through Planning Commission. What are some of the additional factors that have been considered? But certainly we'll look forward to it coming back to us. Other questions? Not seeing others. I will just ask one quick question on this. Want to say thanks again, actually, to Meg and to Chris for the work with the forest stewards over many, many years. And was curious, do we have a need for more forest stewards? And, yeah. And can you just share with the listening public a little bit about the process for applying for that, that's listening in? And maybe we'll hear from Maya.
You want me to answer this?
So we've been, actually Maya and Chris and I have been meeting regularly and recognize the need for more forest stewards, and we've had it for a while. So what I think Maya's got a plan for reaching out and trying to recruit more stewards. What, what we intend to do is have a few events this fall. I kind of see if we've got repeat volunteers. She's reaching out, going to be like, if you want to talk about what your strategies are for.
Yeah, I think, so we have some key parks outlined that Chris and Meg have outlined are in need of forest stewards. We have an aging forest steward base, and so a lot of them are starting to retire or slow, slow down in that. slow down in that work. So we've identified eight or so parks that are in high need of new Forest Stewards. And then we're going to be doing some very hyper-local community engagement around those parks, putting signs at parks, maybe doing some mailers, maybe putting some, you know, signs at parks. In addition to recruiting volunteers who have come to multiple events and might be interested in that, to hopefully, yeah, recruit some new Forest Stewards through the fall and then do the training in the winter in 2026.
Great, thank you. And I know doing the Forest Steward work sounds like it's a real act of love from talking to some of them. I think one of them was recognized at a ceremony last year of having done over 900 hours of work in their forest. Can you remind us what's kind of the average or the minimum commitment to be a Forest Steward in terms of effort?
We just had our Forest Steward appreciation event a couple of weeks ago, and we recognized the folks who have had the most hour contributions. There was one Forest Steward who has contributed 660 hours in the last year. That is abnormal, almost a full-time job as a Forest Steward. I would say most Forest Stewards are out there, you know, once a month, a couple of times a month. We're going to look at in the new position description when we recruit Forest Stewards, if there's going to be a minimum and what that threshold is. We don't want it to be, you know, overwhelming or overburdened some on, you know, they are volunteers. So recognizing the balance of the staff time and capacity that it takes to onboard and train and support those volunteers and also with wanting them to feel excited and not overwhelmed in that position. So we'll see what exactly that number is. Yeah, probably hosting at least one or so event a year and then contributing as they're able to.
And as those plans are more firm and there's more clarity around how they're going to move forward, I'll make sure that we include it in our next update. But also I can make sure that I email it out to city council so that as you have folks asking questions about it, that you can help push it out as well.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And as you're planning events also with our wonderful volunteers, feel free to invite the council. We always love to connect and thank them for all that great work. And seeing no other questions, I think we'll say thank you. And are there any next steps that you want to highlight before we close out? All right, otherwise we talked about a couple of touchpoints that we'll see and we'll see the regular updates ongoing. Thank you all so much. Move on to the next item on our agenda. The next item on the agenda is council talk time. Counsel, are there any items for council talk time? Do we have any items from our ombuds that you'd like to address? And I, yeah, we'll start with that. I have one or two things, but I'll bring it up after. Councilmember Stewart.
Sure, just on the ombud front, wanted to just acknowledge for the council, I think you had seen a couple email responses from me and then an additional follow-up from a resident regarding the noise issues that we are having ongoing conversations about. So just to reiterate, I did have a helpful phone call with a resident. And then the email that you all received yesterday is her documentation of the proposed solution from their perspective. So I have not responded to each individual email, but have instead had helpful phone calls. So those have gone responded to, thanks.
Great. Any other items? If not, I will just bring up a couple of things. One is, we were going to circle back, I think we've gone a little bit over time, so we can spend some more time at a future meeting diving deeper if we have a little bit more time on some of the follow-up on council retreat, although we have kind of in the last two weeks followed up quite a bit on some of the outstanding items. I know that the mayor's office has followed up with Senator Kouloural to try to organize a conversation with some of our community-based organizations that support our immigrant community. And I'm going to be touching base with her again tomorrow unless the mayor has any updates. Actually, the mayor's online here. So maybe the mayor can give us the update of what she knows at the moment. Or is she online? Yeah, I think she is. Hey, Mayor Bernie, we can call you out. But I'll just say, hopefully we'll work as council leadership to, with the mayor to identify how council can participate in that. We may also, in addition, want to follow up. I know there was interest from council members in addition to just reach out to other community-based organizations. And one of the ideas that we had had was to basically make a list of all those organizations. I think once we identify who's going to come to that one roundtable conversation, we can then look at what are the other organizations that aren't kind of covered within there? And our idea from council leadership was that we could have Deidra create on our shared drive the list of organizations and council members could essentially sign up to just be the point person to go have a conversation with them and check in and just say, how are you doing and what do you need from us to support you as a city? And then report back at a future council talk time. So wanted to throw that out as an idea in addition to this specifically focused immigration and immigrant community focused roundtable. We can do thumbs. I see also Councilmember Fields has his hand raised as well. I guess I'll just take a quick poll. Does that sound like a good plan for following up on that? Okay, seeing nods and thumbs. Councilmember Fields, go ahead.
Yeah, to that point, I would say I think we need a little more of a script and a little more understanding of what our barriers, our parameters, our challenges are. I've asked for a, I'm not sure whether it's executive session, I don't know, but I've asked both of you on council leadership, that we need to understand what kinds of, where our restrictions are, where our opportunities are before we go out to the community and say, hey, how's it going? That's my take on it. And we don't need to talk about that right this second. But what I did learn in the past week is there are some businesses that have been getting phone calls. One in particular where we had a fundraising event for the Ukrainian, the guy that ran 100 miles. And businesses associated in, or businesses in downtown Redmond have been getting calls from federal agencies asking about people who are legal. So if we're going to expand and actually do this right, we need to think about reaching out to some of the businesses in Redmond as well.
Great idea. So actually, here's what I'll suggest as a couple potential next steps. One would be if you have thoughts on who should be engaged or even are planning to engage, send that information to Deidra and it can be added to a central list that we can all have visibility into. Whether it is that you plan to engage them or you just think someone should engage them, you can send that and we could identify how we're going to do that, who's going to do that outreach with the idea that we just get it like one council touch. My suggestion, I think, Councilmember Fields, thank you for bringing up around us having a discussion, especially with the mayor and potentially other staff, about how we respond and what we might be thinking about. My suggestion would be that we spend the next couple of weeks doing some of this outreach, listening to our community and finding out what are some of the concerns, questions, needs? And then come together, we could in July schedule a short special meeting, retreat-style special meeting, where we could have a discussion about what we're hearing and what we might do about it with our executive leadership in our city as well, or the executive's office. It's just, that's just an idea that's come to me now, kind of pulling it all together. Councilmember Stewart?
Generally supportive of yes, all of that. And yes, there are businesses in my neighborhood who have been impacted recently. And I would just like to nominate that we also, and I would be happy to take these meetings with another member of the council if they'd like, we should also check in with our public health providers here in Redmond. Thanks.
Great. Mayor Bernie, are you online with us here?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. What do you think about this plan of action? Curious to get your input on this. Does that sound like something that we can collaborate on?
Yeah, we can do that. I'm, you know, I'd get, always get a little nervous when we start about like specifically date, July. Well, I mean, we can see July is quickly approaching, but we'll do our best. But I'm, right now I'm meeting with community leaders and trying to kind of figure out a course of action, somewhere to come on that. But I do like the idea of, in particular, if council members already have connections with community members to kind of do a little extra reach out and kind of see where things are so that we can collectively kind of figure out what a great, what a good path forward would be. Been happy to kind of work through all of that with all of you.
Great, thank you. And so your outreach to community leaders, that includes the work on organizing some sort of immigration-related discussion roundtable?
Yes, I'm going to kind of find out from them what they would like. I don't, I am not going to presume that I know what would be best for them. So I'm trying to talk with them about what would be best for their, them and their communities.
Great, okay. And if it works for the council, we can make this list for people to do outreach. And maybe we'll just provide like three simple questions that we each will ask. And then just to kick off the conversation, I heard from Councilmember Fields wanting to have a little bit of framing on that. So I think if we want to, that way we all start with the same question and then we see where the conversation leads us and we can report back on what we hear. All right, so, and then the other thing I wanted to note, earlier today we were talking about, we talked with our new communications manager and there was a lot of discussion at the council retreat on that topic. And I think Council Vice President Forsyth and I are going to follow up with our communications manager just to dive a little more deeply on that and just to set a regular cadence. So that way we can advance some of the ideas and make sure we get good follow-up on that as well. So those are just a couple of things. And then I think there are some things that were on our list that were in like tier two and three that we might want to come back to and discuss how we want to prioritize that going forward in an upcoming meeting. So I'll pause there. And unless anyone else wants to bring something up at this time on that, there are some council work processes that we might bring up as well. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I realize the hour is getting late, but since we did review these notes in the last couple of weeks, the section on subcommittees, it looks like some additional, to my recollection, some additional gaps were kind of filled in, in the notes. But I'm fine with the process that is there. Again, that's just my memory. But my main comment on the subcommittee section is we did the great work. I would like to see that codified into our council rules because we did that work and we're not going to do those very frequently. And so it'd just be good to lay down the groundwork. And the other tier one issue item was review of our policies and practices, practices, excuse me, around federal engagement. I had a very brief conversation with Mayor Bernie recently and I, I do know that their, her staff is doing a little bit of thinking about this too. But when we funded the federal lobbyists, we were, you know, there was that idea that we would have, you know, an agenda of some sort or, I would just love a touch base, you know, when the moment is right. At one point, Deidra had asked us for time to meet with the lobbyists and I think that that didn't work. But we'd just like to see us come back so we can catch up with ourselves a bit here and understand what the policy framework is that the team is operating with on our behalf in DC and just have a chance to connect with them. Thanks.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just use a show of thumbs as their interest in us bringing the council rules forward at some point for a study session, for us to look about add, just specifically to add the structure around subcommittees into the council rules. Seeing head nods. Councilmember Anderson.
Will we be able to also consider other items?
Potentially, I guess. I'd ask the council. My thought was that we would just focus on that since I think when we open up the council rules, it's kind of like a bigger discussion.
Right, that's why I asked. And I didn't understand what you were saying specifically, if it was limited to your question. So I would be interested in opening up the council rules to address two other items that we've spoken about a little bit before, but we didn't do last time.
Other comments on that? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
I'd want clarity on what those other two are so that I know what I'm saying yes or no to. Right now? If President Kritzner is asking for us to say yes or no and get feedback on what you just proposed, then yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I don't know what I'm saying yes or no to.
I'm hearing a question of what are the items that you would want to add? Councilmember Anderson.
I wanted to add, I have not fully considered what I'd like to propose on this item. It's related to negative campaigning. And then the other item is on vacancies and the process for filling vacancies. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Nueva Camina, did you have a follow-up? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I was just interested in what the other items were, so thank you for clarifying. I think I would definitely need to know more about that, but I, in general, I'm not sure we, what the runway we would need for accomplishing all those items in the, in the council rules. But I think having a, at a different time, having a broader conversation to make sure that we're all good with the subcommittee process, making sure we're all good there, I'm good with moving that into the council rules. But I think anything else I would want to see come through a Hopper process as our typical process.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I agree with the direction and pacing of the vice president and because we did the work in the retreat. So I'll leave it to council leadership's discretion on whether a study session is needed. But since the notes so accurately lay it all out already, it could be brought to committee for a review and move along a little faster if that is amenable to the team.
Yeah, I think I would agree with Council Vice President and Councilmember Stewart of kind of focusing on this item and then, and then as the other items are brought up to have those be brought up separately. I'm seeing a head nod, thumbs up from Councilmember Nueva Camina. So process-wise, unless there's objection online, we'll go with that process. But also if anyone wants to bring up other items, we, you certainly can submit through the Hopper process. And yeah, I will also note that the second item that you brought up, we might be dealing with later this year, so we'll see how that goes. So, and I think that's all. All right. Not seeing anything else? Is there anything for good of the order? All right, that brings us to the last item before executive session. The next item on the agenda is an executive session regarding complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee, RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101F for 30 minutes. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Action will not be taken following the executive session and the meeting will adjourn at, let me do the math, at 10:19. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting. Thank you. Thank you.